...thousand, basically we'll revise that to one hundred and fifteen, or sorry, the new budget. Energy tax, we're at two, uh, twenty-three, uh, twenty-three thousand seven ninety-seven. New one will be for twenty-three thousand. Telecom tax, eleven thousand, oh, I'm sorry, now I got to look at the wrong one. Actual is eight thousand one twenty-one. Proposed is for eighty-five hundred. Fees in lieu of twenty-three hundred and ninety-five dollars with the new budget of twenty-five hundred. Business licenses, actual right now is nineteen twenty, so proposal is for two thousand. Building permits, we're at thirty-one thousand five oh eight, proposing thirty thousand. Road allotment, we're at sixty-nine thousand two twenty-three, new budget for sixty thousand. Interest earnings, we're at forty-seven seventy-five with five thousand.
I'm just curious on the class road, C road funds. Are we anticipating a reduction in mileage in? Is that, is that the reason for going down nine thousand? Are we anticipating Class E to?
We debated on that and I don't know if we're anticipating going down as much as, um, depending on the payments coming in, it's still a lot of them, you know, they make it in before the, or.
Oh.
So, there's a little bit of, that's, I knew that I told them this discussion with this.
But I didn't let you know.
Nope, you didn't. We probably just didn't need to talk about it a little bit.
Alright.
Um, so, you know, we can take that for that extra nine thousand, I don't really see it going down. I know that we changed some payments that may or may not make it in on the timing, but, um.
I thought maybe you had some insight from the state that were reducing that cost per mileage or something.
It's, well, we, you know.
You never know.
You don't, I mean, they say, okay, we're gonna take two cents away and throw it on this, and then we did not get any of that kind of.
Well, I mean, the thing is even from, from sixteen, you went from forty-one thousand two fifty-eight to seventeen, jumped up almost twenty, well, it jumped up to sixty-four seven ninety-two.
Right.
And then just from last year, it only went up another, what, five thousand?
But you remember that's when they put in the new gas tax, and that, and that's what I was trying to see is how that was nuts and bolts, what happened? So, if it's going, but, okay, super.
Well, I, I mean, do you feel, I don't know if it's gonna go down, I just.
Yeah, it, it, you don't know, I mean, the state came up short, and so they, they looked at that whole thing, redid it all because rural counties, they suffered in that. I mean, now into metropolitan areas, and so they redid that, I think, three times, even in special session. They couldn't get it right, and I was wondering, you know, this is where it hits the rubber, it's the road, right here.
That's the end of the road.
So, I was wondering if that was the effect we were seeing, but.
So, do you think we need to change it for the sixty thousand?
You know, I don't, I don't know, that, the legislature could do anything, so it's just a shot in the dark, I think you're good.
One, one thing did cross is that with the growth, take it from rural to bigger, I mean, there's just all those little changes of the mining percentages and.
Yeah. Well, and they're talking about a new gas tax again, so.
And like to be safe, sorry, yeah, that spreads a little maybe higher than normal.
A shot. Thank you.
Okay, impact fee transportation, uh, we're currently at four thousand nine ninety-two, uh, budgeting for seven thousand four eighty-eight. So, down to expenditures. Payroll, we're currently at sixty-five thousand nine thirty-six, uh, new budget for ninety-five thousand. Admin taxes, we're currently at four thousand nine seventy-three, proposing eight thousand. Admin employee benefits, we're currently at four thousand two thirty-nine, new budget for forty-two thousand.
Hundred forty.
Oh, yeah. Dues and subscriptions, we're at fifteen hundred seventy-one dollars, new budget for eighteen hundred. Admin commission and fees, we're at five twenty-nine, uh, new budget for four hundred.
And that was a category that, you know, we had, we looked for that in the back to see that, you know, the amount that's gotta come in.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure we're sure to put some of those down for that line item.
Right, and, and I talked to Mary about this very line item because, in the past, I've just paid for the mill when they have the mill, at the planning commission, I've just done that. But I don't think that we should require the planning commissioner to do that, I think the fund should be there to do that training and that mill, and so I wanted it to keep, be kept in the budget, even if we're not using it currently, that is a tool in the toolbox for future.
So, do you want it went to six hundred?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, tax and license, we're currently two hundred, that'll stay two hundred. Advertising, we're at two ninety-one, um, next year budget for a thousand. Row, we didn't use any this year, um.
Because where you travel somewhere, but you haven't done it here.
Um, that, uh, revision, or new budget for, uh, five hundred. Training, it's currently at three ninety, and new budget for two thousand. Mills and entertainment, we currently don't have anything in there either, revising to five hundred. Office supplies, we're currently at six thousand four oh nine, and that for eight thousand. Office rental, we're currently at twelve hundred, since we just started that, so the new one will be twenty-four hundred. Uh, utilities, currently at eleven hundred fifty-one dollars, new budget for eleven hundred. IT services, we're currently at two thousand, so next year for three thousand.
It is, could just be our age. It's a public hearing.
Thank you, Mark, you're a lifesaver, you get that to work.
It can't be your age, I'm getting it too.
Thirty-five to sixty, first one to be happy with that.
Okay, admin legal, we're currently at fourteen thousand eight seventy-four, new budget for sixty thousand. Admin accounting, we're at thirty-five hundred, new budget fifty-five hundred. Engineering, we're currently at thirty-three thousand eight forty-seven, revised to, uh, thirty-five thousand. Admin insurance, we're currently at seventy-seven fifteen, new budget for eight thousand. Going down to public works, wages currently at eleven three ninety, new budget for fifteen hundred, or sorry, fifteen thousand. Payroll taxes currently at eight seventy-one, new budget for fifteen hundred. Employee benefit, two thousand ninety-five, revised to twenty-one hundred. Tax and license, uh, three hundred and fifty, blue stakes, currently a hundred and seventy-three. I think that's actually supposed to be one twenty-five, maybe?
Yeah.
That's a typo.
That's a bad figure there.
That's a big typo.
Um, do you know what probably would have had in that, uh, two hundred and fifty?
Five hundred.
Five hundred?
I don't know.
A lot of blue stakes, Eric, that, give us an insight on, definitely have a little.
I like it.
That extra decision, they were gathering it out.
I think it was.
Sorry, am I not helping? Yeah, I think, well, I think we did bump to five hundred, like.
I think it was five, okay.
Yeah, 'cause it wasn't a whole lot more, but I don't, we anticipated a little more, so.
Takes twelve.
Make that correction to, yeah, take the twelve thousand out and just leave the five hundred.
Boy, that was a cut, I don't know much percentage wise, that would, that hurt.
Ouch. Um, supplies, uh, currently at ten thousand one hundred, revising to eight hundred.
Thousand.
Oh, eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Weed chemicals, currently at zero, budgeted fifteen thousand.
Weed chemicals, that's another typo.
Yeah. Eight thousand is supposed to be from, uh.
Last year was three thousand.
Three thousand, yeah, I was gonna say, plus a three thousand.
Budget was three thousand, so.
Yeah, and I think we can leave it right at that.
Yeah, we didn't use that, so I agree.
Right. With the additional weeds that we have in, on the list, I thought we'd had a big influx, but we didn't, so far.
Exactly.
I'm coming with it.
Okay, so Mary, we'll take that back to then, uh, three thousand on that.
Okay. Um, snow ring.
They taking care of me.
We're currently at seventy-five hundred, and I think you wanted to have a discussion about this.
I did, so we, we left, so that would, we came in at seventy, what did we spend up last?
Seventy-five hundred is what we currently are for this year.
And so, I knew we'd have a discussion on that, so we, we got, last year was our largest snow year, and so we did fifteen and we're at half of that, and so, I just didn't know where to put this, as far as I can guess the weather, I was hoping we'll help.
Maybe we'll get a decent weather, but.
This department is, Pam, do you know the weather?
She was hot dry.
Hot dry, okay, I guess we're okay.
Following the same grant logic, can we make it zero, and, and then we'll deal with it?
You know, I knew we'd adjust it, that's why I said seventy-five, I, we've always been over the ten thousand mark every year, um, definitely anticipated, uh, adjusting that, I just didn't know if we wanna hit that fifteen again, 'cause we haven't been at that high ever, I don't think, except for.
Well, the, the year before, you were twenty-two thousand.
Nine in twenty-seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, we need to.
We do.
What's the budget fifty, you hope for the best?
Well, uh, it says anything double or twelve thousand or fifteen thousand or?
Yeah, I think, I think fifteen. I'm pretty sure that's where it was supposed to be, we just moved up one line, that's all.
Yeah, and that could have been two, fifteen thousand one hundred, there we go.
Hey, engineering, we're currently five thousand two sixty-one, budgeting for three thousand.
And that number did come from your eye, as far as this particular budget here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to page four. Water services, we're currently at seventy-two thousand two forty-one, new budget for seventy-five thousand. Wages, we're currently, uh, seven thousand eight eighty-three, leaving that at nine thousand. Uh, employee taxes and benefits, currently at five sixty-eight, leaving that at six hundred.
Maybe just discussion, see if it might actually change that.
Could do.
And so, um, so we're on it now, is that something we wanna talk about or deal or increase about, that, that's another, one I knew would come up that, uh, that particular figure not necessarily be accurate?
This is for our.
Next.
For next year.
Next year, so, so here's, we need, because of changes that we're gonna be talking about, that may or may not affect that amount there.
I think, I think we need to increase that by, um, I would take that to a thousand dollars.
Just on the taxes, right?
Yep. So, six hundred to a thousand.
Great. Okay, dues and memberships, uh, currently at five-ten, and new budget for five fifty. Mileage, we're at a hundred and seventy-four dollars, and revising that to five hundred. Water con, conference, we're at zero, um, we had budgeted fifteen hundred, revising to twelve.
Real quick, Eric, do you think as far as training, I mean?
I thi, I think you better leave that alone, just 'cause you didn't have to pay for a one-year gun, I'll have to do your summer.
No, I agree, I just think there's more, more training, you, you're the one that gets his molds and you know they're stealing.
I tell you what, the training is something I think we should have available, as you seen tonight, that's a very, if you're trained, you're better off, and if you're not, there's mistakes made, and, and then next thing you have is an attorney telling you what happened. And, and the lawyers make a lot, if you look at a fifteen hundred versus training versus an attorney sitting there, it's better to be trained, in my opinion.
I, I think that Eric's preparedness tonight showed that.
Yes. Okay, office supplies, we're currently at six eighty-three, revising to two thousand. Uh, water utilities, currently at thirty-one hundred ninety-eight dollars, revising to four thousand. IT services, nine hundred and eighteen, revising to a thousand. Legal and professional, we're currently at eighty-one, revising to four thousand. Engineering, currently at nine thousand one hundred nineteen dollars, revising to twelve thousand five hundred. Water testing, currently at twenty-one hundred sixty-two dollars, revising to seventy, or, sorry, twenty-seven hundred. Sampling, uh, we're at two sixty, and revising to eighteen hundred.
Is that it? Correct. Is there an anticipation of water sampling? Um, what, what, what did I do?
Well, remember, those are gonna be broke out separately now.
They are.
And so, it was massive, it will be cut, as far as that, uh, the water testing, sampling, and supplies, that is something that's a discussion, and I mean, we're trying to, our current, probably, our current way we're doing it, we probably wanna look to a maybe more efficient way to do it.
Yeah.
But, um, we've talked about that, as far as fees and accounts, um, the twenty-one, so. I guess from our standpoint, we didn't know which, it, it's putting this together, which, uh, particular tests, which is particularly year.
True, and you don't know until the state gives you the list, huh? Are they doing radium or?
All, all that, so that's where, that's where we just wanted to be on that plus side, just because we hadn't got, first of all, all the testing and stuff solved yet, and then we didn't quite understand, or, excuse me, we didn't know, we had a big dizzy test, so.
Yeah, I know, well, Kim had worked on one of them and got them knocked down for us, and saved us about four hundred dollars on one of the tests, so.
Yeah, we, we got a lot of things knocked down from quarterly to annual, and then there's still a number of every five-year tests, and I don't remember when, it's been a couple of years, I don't remember. I don't think this, if, if this year's year five, next year is.
Okay.
And so, this, this may be a little conservative, but I don't think it's off as much as I'd really like it to be.
Yeah, they keep adding to us, I mean, they find something else.
This is one of the line items, I didn't know you have a very clear pitch of all.
Yeah, yeah, who knows what they're gonna make this test work?
They're not gonna take anything away.
So, between you and camera, around you, do these figures get overly excessive, or?
The twenty-seven hundred is what you gave me originally, for, for your part of it?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's the twenty-one to twenty-seven.
I, I, yeah, I mean, that, that's basically not off of what we've been able to do the last few months.
Okay.
Some months we can do it a lot faster and a lot better, and I can combine it with some other things to bring that down. If I can't combine it with other things, that's what the cost is.
Okay.
So, I, I think that's a good number to budget, to the extent I can combine it with other things, we, you know, when we amend the budget, hopefully you'll find a smaller number.
We encourage that, come on.
We try to do that as often as we can, short of, short of if we're about to get a violation, we take stuff down.
Yes.
Good plan. Okay, what do you need to do?
Sorry, Mary.
No, you're fine. Uh, water insurance, currently at eleven hundred forty-five dollars, revising fifteen hundred. Uh, water impact fees, we're currently thirteen thousand two sixty-three, revising to twenty thousand.
So, we would, and that's water hookup fees, which would be two hookups, which would be in next fiscal year, and maybe five, maybe three, but two, and so that's got, plan on three, and then.
Cause we don't for sure we've got the two.
Yeah, but that may be this month or next month, so we won't be sure there, um, we planned for three.
Won't be this month, we gotta run the water lines for one of them. Won't be this month. But, I don't think, well, and we don't know that, it's an unknown, so there's no way to bring it about right now, okay.
So, it's a twenty million?
Well, it's the fire flow thing, so, it's, it's an unknown, so.
I think there's an equal chance of it being higher or lower, so I think we're in the right spot, but I know we're wrong.
I love that answer.
That covers all our bases.
He's gonna be mad when we're right and wrong.
Alright, stormy event.
What was that?
You must have learned about that.
Haven't said, let him worry about, not worry all that, saying we just made.
Okay, water services currently at twenty-eight thousand four fifty-six, revising to twenty-seven hundred.
No.
Or, yeah. Okay, sewer service, we're at, uh, six thousand five seventy, revising to. Sorry, I'm on mute, she thinks I'm talking to her. Okay, um, sewer services, six thousand five seventy, revising to six thousand.
Someone are we anticipating losing some services there?
No, uh, once again on the sewer services, um, you know, if we're at five seventy, the year before we're at thirty-two, we made that raise and bumped them up, and then, uh, yeah, people paid or didn't pay, or, I don't know, it's all full five hundred dollars, so, yeah, try to be conservative on our monies coming in, but, whether it's three hundred or five hundred, I.
Okay, sounds good, I like it.
Okay, salary and wages, currently at five thousand four thirty-five, budgeting for ten. Employee benefits currently at four sixteen, budgeting for six hundred. Mileage currently at one seventy-one, budgeting for four hundred. Um, office supplies currently at three forty-six, budgeting for seven hundred. Utilities currently at sixteen forty-three, budgeting for two thousand. IT services currently three seventy-five, budgeting for four hundred. Legal currently at fifty-four, budgeting for a thousand. Engineering, currently at thirteen thousand six sixty-eight, budgeting for thirty-five. Question for you, was there also an additional, I thought at one point that my understanding was there was twenty or thirty thousand that also was going to impact this? Is that correct?
On the C A D G side of things? Yes, and so that increase would include that. So, so the reason this Storm Haven was so much, is so much higher this year is, is impacting the grant.
Right, so are we, are we, do you think we're safe within thirty-five hun, or thirty-five thousand?
Safe manter.
Give us a close one.
I can see it, it's a safe answer.
Based on what I know now, I think that's conservative, I think we'll be okay.
Keep it thirty-five?
Yeah, keep it thirty-five, I mean, I don't think we need to go higher, I, I'd be hesitant to go lower, there's a lot of engineering work and environmental stuff to be done with the grant.
Okay.
Um, testing, currently at six hundred four dollars, budgeting for two thousand. Sampling currently at one fifty-eight, budgeting for eighteen hundred.
Okay, just quickly, Ryan, when we're talking about testing and sampling, is this, would that include the new well on this, or do we need to look at the new well for the sampling as we ship that, bump that into service?
And even consider that.
It's a good point, but, so initially we'll have some, you know, a couple thousand dollars in sampling, which I hope is covered under the grant, I'll let you know when the bids come in.
Okay.
But should be covered under the grant, afterwards, you're right, as a new source, they may require some additional testing.
Yeah.
We're already under quite a bit of additional testing with the current well with nitrates and additional bactees. So, I don't know how that affects the price, it's probably about the same.
So, Chip, we originally had it budgeted at a thousand, I think that's why we bumped it to two, was anticipating those additional testing.
It's too far away, a water replacement well, and so, if there's no advantage to abandoning it, then I'm not gonna do it. Exactly. So, I think the intent is to take it offline, but leave it, because I don't see any point in building a well if I don't have to.
And once we take it offline, we're not required to do the testing on that, right?
Correct, yeah, we'll declare it as offline.
Okay, sounds great, I think you'll make up for it, I think you're right.
Right now, I think it's a wash, it's hard to tell, if, if that initial sampling comes back, if we have something that's right on the line, and then they require monthly testing or quarterly for something, that would change, but, I don't have any reason to believe that the tests are gonna come back high at this point. Other than what tests do, that, that's what happens.
Okay, yeah, so that'll probably be a wash.
We can hope.
Yes, that's all we can hope for.
Okay, supplies and maintenance, or repairs and maintenance, sorry, ten thousand one forty-seven, revising to twenty thousand. Uh, water insurance, twenty-seven.
Hold on a second, Mary, so, Kim had probably a little question, so once again, where we're at Storm Haven, and we sent the ten to twelve, my mindset thinking every year could have a little more money just because we might have more breakdowns of lines, because we're, we're gonna get the, uh, well done, the lines are gonna be done next year or so, so, I was figuring it would be realistic for, for our to allow, just from your opinion?
I'd take it up to twenty percent, in my opinion.
Over, over twenty thousand, from twelve to twenty, would go higher?
Well, I said take it up twenty percent.
From the, from the twenty thousand?
Well, when we had was, the budget was twelve thousand, and we adjusted that to twenty, is that?
Last year, yeah, last year was twelve, I shouldn't, there we.
So, we went up a lot more than twenty percent.
But are you saying that we'll take another twenty percent over the twenty thousand?
No, no, twenty thousand, shit, I was gonna, leave it.
Propose would be an admission. No, we can spend it, huh?
And that's why we're, that is twenty from twelve, is just because we're anticipating a hiccup.
Okay, Karen. There's our grant.
Yeah.
We have our grant buddies, and, um.
What questions are?
One, one thing.
There's nothing to compare it to.
Ask questions, we have good answers too.
Yeah. You think that's enough? So, do we feel comfortable adopting this, uh, budget with the, uh, changes made?
I think we do, I don't, is this discussion?
A little bit before we can, before our call from.
I think, I mean, like you said, there's no crystal ball, but it's the best you can do, is. We've anticipated some projects and maybe some problems?
Well, I know we've been a few, higher on a few of these water things, I just, you know, I don't know, we've been lucky the last few years, you know, one of these years we're making a little bit more than we've done in the last few years, that's all.
Yeah, um, that eight thousand that we originally took out and, and gave to Storm Haven, that has not been repaid, is that correct?
I don't think, aware that it ever had been paid, yeah.
Okay, so that's.
And I don't think they've been extracted, something's probably on top.
So, it's, it was still outstanding, or?
I believe it is.
Okay.
And then, yeah.
What's outstanding?
We took eight thousand dollars from the other water fund, put in, we might have done it from the dental fund, I can't remember, anyway, we took eight thousand and transferred it to Storm Haven.
Yep.
And I don't know that that repayment has ever come back, so there may be a deficit that the town's carrying more than what this shows.
And then, you know, the new budget to pay, you know, pay that back, I don't, I did not anticipate that payment coming out of those monies, but.
Right.
Definitely, I mean, we did, we were taking it back soon, right?
Yeah, I just never seen it come through on the budget item, so it wasn't, and, uh.
Definitely did that.
Okay.
Maybe just a side note, make that for a, a agenda item down the road.
Okay, so, public, you're in a public hearing.
So, I mean, yeah, we'd like to put that on the agenda, is anyone, uh, like to discuss that, or don't think we should put it on the agenda? Okay. Any other comments or discussion on?
I don't know.
Come on, publicly.
There you go, what happened, he's on the town's employees here.
Where's that lawyer?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, there we go, just gotta call for that, so we have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second? A motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? Tell it to turn the motion back into regular session. So, we, first?
Yes, sir, first.
And we have a first and a second, okay, a second, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
So we're not having it back into regular session? Uh, anything that we need to discuss, or, uh, would you like to approve?
Good, okay, keep it up.
As up will approve.
You post a check with her, I'll come on, I hope you...
Um, so on number six, you have here the adoption of all the, certainly, certainly right now, are back in regular session, um, we could adopt. We could go ahead and adopt this now, or wait to, well, let's, let's adopt this then?
Any other questions, Bob?
And we have those changes and reforms from us?
There you go, those numbers down, turn it down to a...
Motion to approve two thousand eighteen nineteen budget.
We have a motion to approve it, do we have a second? Do we have a second, any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The budget for two thousand eighteen nineteen, kind of budget, if it approved. We'll now be moving on to...
Wait, do you wanna do the amended as well? Why you're right here?
We're still in regular session, so we do need to approve the amended as well, so Chair and Attorney, can you motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve, um, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget with the amendments.
Just see, on your, on your, on your... It's the amended budget, sorry.
Make the motion to... I'm sorry, you guys?
No, no, make the motion to, uh, to approve the seventeen eighteen. The amended budget.
Make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen amended budget.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all sorts of, in discussion?
Yeah, the, uh, the amended budget is seventeen eighteen.
Yep, so the terminology, the seven, it's two thousand seventeen eighteen, so that's what I amended, I'm sorry, yeah, the eighteen's are tentative, uh, the... So one more motion if we wanna restate that, so.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget.
Okay, as amended?
With, as amended, with changes in revenues and expenses, okay?
All sorts. We got a second on it, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. But, uh, tentative budget, uh, presented and approved, thank you, sir. Number five, public hearing, uh, uh, increase for two thousand eighteen nineteen for all employees in the town is a public hearing scheduled, uh, Chair and Attorney, take a motion to go into public hearing and go out of, uh, regular session?
Like motion to go out of regular session and go into the public hearing for wage increase for two thousand eighteen slash nineteen for employees.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second? We have a first and a second, uh, all in favor of going into public hearing, we aye? Aye. Any opposed? Right now, we're in, uh, public hearing, uh, with regards to wage increase for two thousand eighteen nineteen for employees. So the reason why this got put into the public hearing, uh, from my point of view, and bringing it in, is we have not, uh, in November, um, some changes were made with, uh, the council and some people here, um, we have not got to what that, I think that intention of the goal was for a certain individual, and then in between last month and this month, we had a visit from U R S, the state, uh, Sherry had some questions, called up, uh, all of a sudden I get a call from Mary and says, we have a state individual in our office, we need to, you could come over, so Sherry came over and I came over and we, we met at the office, and, um, this next little item, we are now, we have people that, by state law, we have to start dealing with things a little different than we have with regards to employee benefits and things, so, um, I said in our most of that meeting with regards to, uh, what that gentleman was indicating, that us as a municipality and certain people that are making certain amounts have to be, by state law, involved in, uh, their, uh, program. What he didn't say that I did find out is that, uh, the big town could, or the individual, I guess, could, um, sign a waiver and not be involved in that, but other than that, we were told that the, uh, I mean, actually spend that amount of time, we have no control over that, it is a thing that has to happen. Does anybody know anything different, did I say that right, that you may understand Eric or Mary, is, I don't know, Mary, Mary finished up with the, uh, well, Mary and Sherry finished up with the gentleman, and there are some tables here that, uh, we're gonna talk about, and we'll let Mary talk about that as well.
So basically, as of February first, two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, anybody that makes over one thousand eighty-one dollars per year, or twenty hours, is, and they have to be an appointed person, is actually eligible for U R S. Unless they're exempt, and that falls under Title forty-nine under the State Code. So basically, when you look at it, we fall under the non-contributory, so if you're looking at this chart, that falls under, um, the non-contributory, and there are, like Eric, because he's already in the system, falls under a tier one, so if you look down into the non-contributory, which is the second part of it down, you see where it says eighteen forty-seven? That's eighteen point forty-seven percent, so whatever he makes, times that eighteen point forty-seven is what the entity has to pay in towards U R S. If it's a tier two, then it's the third column over, under the hybrid system, and same thing, under the non-contributory, it is, um, a sixteen sixty, um, is the percentage.
And so, with regards to this, we don't have a whole lot as far as, I mean, this is what we have to follow, the farming from the state, um...
This is a term?
This is, this is something that, that we have to do, or, should be on the darn system. So municipality, when you meet a certain threshold, then we have to, you know, we're involved in it now, and, and we have some, uh, those criteria, and if you, if you meet those criteria, you... So, the discussion really needs to be, that, that's one thing, so Mary would be under that with regards to the hour and monies, Eric would be under that, um, I also wanna bring up last November, how, I don't think that we ever included, and maybe they didn't want to or not, I don't, I just can't remember, but we never talked to, or helped the planning department out with regards to their meeting, uh, and I don't know, Erica, how they feel, but you know how they feel or not?
Sometimes I do, honest, I don't.
So, you know, from my point of view, I think anyone that serves the town, whether it's fifty bucks a meeting, or twenty-five bucks a meeting, or, um, you know, they, they, uh, a little paycheck bonus hat on the back after eight or ten years, so. This discussion is meant for the whole town, and, and we either can do anything, or nothing, or one, or two, or whatever, or anything you need to do.
We get paid for those extra meetings.
The what, next to meetings?
Those extra meetings.
You know, I'm not sure if they, uh, the, the, the count, or...
You guys did.
I mean, I'm, I'm salary and, and Eric's salary.
That's a, you know, Stephanie and John and I are fifty dollars a meeting, right? So, that, uh, those meetings are combined.
Oh, I see, two meetings a month.
Yeah, and there's two meetings for the month.
And then, you know, so...
Another one this month?
Two weeks, I believe. Yeah, I've lost some plot from anybody else, of, everybody, uh, you know, the, the goal back in November was trying to get our planner to a twenty dollar an hour, and we've got a six months track history, and we're not quite there yet. Um, that's one of the issues, uh, with regards to trying to get it to that point.
What else do we need to do to get it to that point?
Get it, just do it.
Well, we, yeah, we just did it here, we have, uh, we're, you know, Mary will be...
Well, and I think, I think this whole hearing, I mean, we're talking about all of our employees.
Yes.
And so, most municipalities have a two percent for wage increase every year, I think the town needs to look at that, we have some monies now, we're, we're coming in, where, you know, and, but, I think that, uh, we got the email, I think needs to be read into the record since they're not here, from Lynn. And, uh, but I, I...
Are we talking about also giving the planning commission money?
Oh, yeah. That, that's, yeah, so we haven't brought that, so in November, that never came up with planning as the members themselves.
Okay.
And, and so, we wanna talk, you know, involve them in this, uh, as well as Eric, as well as Mary's monies that, uh, we don't really have a say on her side of things with regards to the benefits, what the state's requiring.
Okay.
We do have on, if, you know, if they, I wanna get a better handle on the monies that are gonna happen, that we need to spend for, um, all the town employees, and I think we've kinda got little handles of it, but the water side, I mean, you got you and Gary, and then, um, you know, I mean, that's kinda easy, but I think the money did give me some change or more business, and, and so, um...
How close are we to paying Eric twenty dollars a month, I mean?
I think about, well, depending on the month, so how did our answer?
Well, I, I keep track, and, uh, two thousand seventeen, so this is, this is the, for sixteen, I made nine dollars and thirty-three cents an hour. Okay, for the year, so that's two thousand sixteen, for two thousand seventeen, uh, when you break that down, I've made sixteen eighty-eight, this is, this is last year's... Here, give one to Mary, too. So those are all the months of two thousand seventeen, and that shows the, what the average month is, what, and what the pay is, so last year, I made sixteen eighty-eight an hour.
Oh, we did, Mary?
Yeah.
We just got a print, so...
So, so in two thousand sixteen, when we did, it was nine thirty-three, and then, of course, the blue steak is already a twenty, 'cause that's just hourly, but, we're hoping that, oh, I don't think that's going away.
Blue steak is not going away.
Yeah, I don't think that's going away.
So calculated wise, the forty, uh, the twenty-five, you know, that's your sixteen, so we need to be at twenty-nine nine hundred, just to...
That's twenty dollars and thirty, and three cents based on two thousand seventeen hours. Now, we can discuss the hour thing, 'cause I know that that's, and this is just the planner part of this, I know there's, this is a bigger discussion. There is a ton of meetings and stuff that go on, that I don't... Well, it's not that, it's that, that I think there's more than, that somebody needs to be to, how much do you want the planner involved? How much do you want me to go to and do? I, I mean, it's, it's, basically, I look at this and I think, okay, I'm leaving a twenty-six dollar job to go work for nineteen sixty-six, that's a good idea.
I mean, it's a little bit strange, man, I, I, you know, exactly, I, I wanna get you up to four and above, because the alternative is, uh, I don't know, like, ten times more?
Well, yeah, if we hire somebody, we're looking at six figures.
And Mark Anderson's like, oh, fuck.
No, he's not, he's not.
He's found one.
But I just don't know how much the town, I, I get, just get the feeling sometimes that maybe they don't want me involved as much as I am.
Let me ask you this, how involved, do, do, is this more, how do you feel about all the job you're doing?
I think I do the town, uh, in service, because I think it could be more. Uh, every one of these meetings we go to, something comes up with the town of Daniel, the slipper rode into us, they put a bypass through the town, they do something that involves the town that we're not at, that, I mean, we, the weed meeting, it's during the week, I understand that, but you gotta go there, I mean, they're passing laws that we have to enforce in our town, and if, if they adopt this code, we're stuck, there it is, and, and you've lost your say. The same thing with all those agreements that we just talked about, with, with, uh, Bureau of Reclamation, and all of these things are just, and I, so I don't know, I don't know where to draw the line.
So I'm gonna ask you, so, meetings are obviously important, you're very good at that side of understanding, at the same time, you've got just so many other things, which part do you want, and which part would you rather, what care that you do have?
I don't mind doing it all, but what I don't wanna do is do something, and then the council thinks that I'm out just doing things, ranking up hours for something that maybe isn't, that, in somebody's opinion, isn't necessary, and where it comes down to is when you hit the pool, but you're talking to turkeys. That's where it comes down to.
Well, and I, I personally, I don't know how you feel about all the jobs you're doing, 'cause if you feel fine, great, I feel fine about it, but if you're like, man, you know, I'm overloaded, I'd rather, rather not do blue steaks, then, or whatever, so if you're clear tonight, in front of the, you know, the jobs you're doing now, you're happy with, great, then we'll accommodate, 'cause I don't think you can be replaced with regards to what we're dealing with.
Well, I have a vested interest in the town, so. I can tell you that, that's why I do this, because I'm vested interest in the town, but...
You're gonna be paid at least an hour, the wage, and at least twelve cents, but you, when you're leaving a job, don't do that.
It, it just hit me last week when I was at a meeting, that was stupid, it wasn't...
Well, the information you provided tonight, um, with our other public hearing, it stopped it in its tracks, I mean,
It's valuable.
That just saved thousands in terms, I mean, you know, it, it did, it stopped it in its tracks, it, it would...
Probably put it on better roll, thanks.
I, I was just gonna add, it's for both meetings to go to, 'cause somebody who goes to lots of meetings, it's really hard to tell in advance which ones are gonna be, you know, which ones you need to be at.
That's true.
I go to a lot of meetings, and I think, why am I here? I miss one meeting, and I think, you know, crap, why did I miss that one? So a lot of times, I mean, to justify to the council, why did I go to this one, why did I go to that one? 'Cause when we're not there, crap happens, the meeting I went to, nothing happened.
Well, even the training, I mean, we're in St. George, there's questions here, why, was it worth it, what, you know? It was worth it to me, if it wasn't worth it, I wouldn't have went, but... I try not to do things that aren't worth it, but...
Well, well, I guess I just, no, I wouldn't evaluate it on like, you know, a month, single meeting, but more, you know, that meeting over the course of the year, or the meetings in general, because every one of those monthly meetings I go to, some of them are really productive, and you, you better be there, others are a complete waste of time, and you have no idea, I mean, you can't read from the agenda, you have no idea going in whether or not they're gonna be useful or not.
But it averages out.
But, well, so, in terms of are we being valuable, either go, you know, go or don't go, and know that some of them are gonna be a waste, and some of them are gonna be worth every penny, and probably ten times more.
Well, the reason I say that is because if I bring the hours down, the wages go up.
Right.
So, I mean, it's...
And that's one way to adjust it, I would say, if you're comfortable doing, you're doing, meaning, uh, I mean, you, you go to an awful lot of meetings, and I, that's, I mean, that was really important, and I know that I missed more than I should, uh, myself, uh, I think the council probably could have some other, you know, go to some meetings, or maybe discuss certain meetings, uh, another weed board, I mean, you have all, but maybe we gotta assign a person to...
We have, we have a guy that took the weed board. I've never seen him there, though.
Can I make a comment? I watch what Eric does, and, yeah, I know.
Yes, surely.
I watch what he does, and he really enjoys what he does, and he really would, if it's too much, say it's too much. I think his biggest worry, and I probably could be wrong, is he's not here trying to, I mean, he didn't start doing this to try and get him a job, you know what I mean, to, I don't know how to put it, to...
I throw that to everybody, if it's starting out.
Yeah.
These guys called me.
I know, but I mean, some, I've heard some people say, oh, Eric's just betting his, you know, he's not, he, and I, that really, I'm thinking, oh, you don't know Eric, if that's what you think, you know, but I, he's not doing that. I just think that it's nice that he's seeing that, oh, at least I'm compensated, at least what, if I leave my job to go do this, I can do this, I'm still making a living, all you guys are all still making a living, I mean, he's not asking for the two hundred dollars an hour, he's just saying, you know, could you, if, and I think that's where he's really struggling, and, you know, and I keep reminding him, no matter what, he's not gonna keep everybody happy. Some people are always gonna, it's gonna, you know, nitpick about it, but it's just the way life is, he can't change that. If he's doing his honest job, and he's doing what he's supposed to, and doing what he needs to, and he's bettering the town, then, you know, that's all, you guys can ask from him, and that's, and for Eric, that's what he's gonna give, that's just the way he is.
Would you state your name for the record?
I'm probably the ex Shelley Bunker.
You know, and I'll, I'll give my two bits on this as well, I couldn't, you know, show you, I couldn't agree with you more, and I've known that Eric's a big boy, and he could say if he didn't, uh, if he was too busy, to say, hey, man, we need to find somebody else to take care of this. On the other hand, um, invaluable for all the different reasons, and I, I have no issues to take him, uh, I mean, once again, any decision other than this would cost us like ten times more, so, you know, uh, you know, I, I could say it's easy to make it at even thirty thousand, and for this particular... this particular situation and try and look at it next year, for that.
Like I said, this is bigger than just the planner thing.
It is, and so, I want to get just through yours and we'll talk about maybe any other planner.
Yeah, I didn't probably go, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, I don't think he's busy enough, he gotta take it up real fast.
He did, I have to, there was a meeting Monday.
I think we're count three.
And he's been out spraying, and he's been...
I saw Mark spraying this morning at 7:00 AM.
My, my thought is that if somebody's really injected to what he's being compensated for, does that person want to volunteer for that job for what he's getting paid?
Do they have another option?
From the public comment, are you raising him on an hourly basis or to a salary?
I think we should go to a salary.
The problem is our auditor, if I was hourly, and our auditor said, I can't do that, so...
From the planner, so that's, that's why we haven't made it that easy, it'd be a simple thing to make.
Well, it can't be in the power...
Because I thought that was ideal, if I don't work, I don't get paid.
He's tracking, his hours, and $17 an hour, it works out somewhere around 26,000 a year. You're right?
Something like, yeah, so you got, uh, 25, 200, with his hours, gave him out to 16.88. So, you would take, in this particular scenario, 29,900 to give him 20, about $20.3 an hour. About 29,900 is close enough to 30, I like round numbers, that $20 is not gonna be a whole, it's not gonna change that a whole lot, I didn't, um, I think we're gonna be looking at this every year, or especially until we get a, a person that, and we can have half time, full time, whenever we have, I feel grateful that Eric still will take this responsibility, I personally have no issue with this, and I, I'd like to take care of him, and, and anybody else that works for the town?
And how does he get his first on his mileage?
Smithson?
You don't turn miles in?
I didn't see any...
No, he never turned his miles in.
And Stephanie got me today spraying, and I don't charge the town for each spray, that's, that's just...
I just sprayed it like at school.
I did, and we will talk about that.
We should rock that up.
What's that?
When you're blue steak, do you get miles in that?
I don't, I just go and do it, and I haven't turned in much, I, you know what, I have a vested interest in the town, I really do, but, it's, it just, unfortunately, you get pulled a lot in direction. It's my own fault, because I can do a lot.
Now, then next year, bumping it, keep bumping it up till we get enough.
Well, and I just, I mean, that's such a low number to begin with anyway, I don't even, it's so long to try to discuss it, at the same time, anyway.
We should point Reed Lynn's letter, I think, and then...
Reed Lynn's letter.
You hear that, none?
Oh, yeah.
You can read it?
Uh, I, I misplaced it, I got, I gutted them all my stuff, who cares?
So this is a letter, uh, that was sent to all the council members, and I'll just read that. "All council members, I wanted to come to the public hearing regarding a possible wage increase but ended up out of town, so that's, uh, thought I'd send my box to you as, to you all, as there are newer members of the council who may not know the history of wages. At the time of incorporation, the mayor and others involved in the town's formation received little to no compensation until June 2010. When an ordinance was adopted setting the wages, this can be found on our website. The first increase thereafter was in 2014, when wages were bumped up, and I believe you council members started to receive $50 per meeting attended, attendance. In August of last year, the council voted to double the mayor's compensation from 800 to 1600 per month, increase the planner's wages from 1300 per month to 2100 per month. He also receives retirement benefits and additional wages for blue steak hours, which total over $3200 per month, double the clerk's compensation from 600 to 1350 per month. As we currently have a new clerk in the office since January, who agreed to the present wage, I don't think that an increase for that position is warranted at this time. In meetings last year, I had suggested 2,000 for the clerk, and I was relieved when the council voted for a lesser amount, as I soon realized that time spent doing clerk duties did not warrant such high compensation. I don't believe the other two positions are due for an increase in less than a year's time. When reviewing other municipal wages, suggestions, excuse me, municipal wages, suggestions of 2 or 3 percent increase annually, I believe applies to full time officials, one must remember, all of our salaried officials are part time and have other full time employment. I can't help but consider the need for more money to an individual when looking at raising their town compensation. We're, we're still young and have needs, as a town suggests purchasing land for building a town hall. I would like to see the planning commission receive compensation for their hard work and dedication on the PC, as our code states, they receive, I believe, it's a whopping $2 per meeting. Perhaps the same $50 that council members receive, the others paid positions within Daniel, is the water secretary, who received an increase in, who received an increase in 2015, when stormy even water became part of the billing system. Thanks for listening, and I hope you consider these comments in making your decisions later." So, that was some, some feelings that came in through, uh, you know, the, the previous clerk, um, well taken, especially for the planning that has been forgotten, uh, with regards to wages, that's our feeling on it, we'll put it in the record, what do we, what do we go?
Or she need $50 a meeting?
You know, you know, I would think that, you know, that $50 may or may not let, help them be a little more prepared, you know, if they feel they may not be getting nothing, they may not feel ready to prepare a whole lot, I don't know that that's the case, I just, I feel everyone that works for the town ought to be compensated, I have no problem with my first thing, $50 per meeting.
Would the council members be interested in, in bringing this forward to the planning commission, see how they feel about it?
I mean, I, I would, I would like to know them before tonight, just because if they all, I mean, it's not like, yeah, they don't want to raise, but I'm sure they would appreciate that.
There's two of us here tonight.
I, I will still do the same job if I get paid or not, it's not really about the money, for me, it's about our town and trying to keep it the way we want it.
And, and you know, and that's how we all have been since day one, and now we're at the point where we, we can certainly take care of a $50...
I'd rather my $50 go to you guys, because you work a lot harder.
I think that you proposed in November last year, so...
Because you guys work really hard, and have a lot of houses.
I think the planning commission works hard, I think that they have a lot...
We throw everything down.
They have a lot of homework, and, and as you can see, a lot of decisions hinge on, on the decisions that are made, that's why I think training is so important, I think that they're spending a lot of time on the internet, doing, reading town stuff, keeping apprised of what's going on. I hate to say it, $50 isn't crap, and it's, but it is a token.
It's a token.
It is a token.
It's better than a meal.
Yes, it's better than the $2 they haven't been getting.
And a six pack of beer.
I said, why do you do the IRS?
So, I, I, we could certainly take it there and ask them how they feel, I...
I mean, do you feel someone wouldn't want it? I mean, there could be a case where finance, I mean, they may not want it, I, I don't know what it might be.
Pushing the new tax bracket.
Exactly, I can do that.
I really can't speak for the other commissioners.
What's your own feeling?
My own opinion? I, I don't either. I, I always have loved to brag about how the annual property taxes and what have you has never come up, we've been able to, and it's, it's really fun when we have public meetings to say, do you realize how we've kept this thing down and, and...
And a sewer of increases.
What we're accomplishing here and when it went up, and everybody else has taken up the taxation, you know, 25 to 30 percent a year, we've been able to go down one and a half percent, I'd just like to brag a little bit, is it, is it worth, you know, the 600 bucks a year? No, I think so.
Some of us were at that meeting, the planning commission for Eversity, and that deal just on the west side of Mill Road, and...
And there's one coming up on our meeting, the same one, you know, that's going up against, up in front of the council to approve it, but it's gonna be at our next special meeting, you know, so, anyway, maybe we'll see.
The only thing I can think, not particularly for me, but maybe we get someone to volunteer, so to speak, and participate more in our town if they thought there was a...